Good evening, welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna do is open up for public forum. If there's anybody here wishing to address the council that's not on the agenda, now's the time. Please step to the podium, give us your name and address, and let us know why you're here, sir.
Ethan said I should just do this real quick now. I just want to thank you guys for voting for us. I mean, honestly, I didn't know the numbers during the meeting. I was like, if I would've known, I just left. But we just really appreciate it that you guys voted to stay with us.
Yeah, well, you know, I think that decision for me, I didn't have to make it, the council made it. But we do appreciate the level of service we're getting. And to me, sometimes service is more important than price, especially if the price is close. So thanks for the level of service you give us.
Well, thank you.
And I'll say this, I hear from citizens time and again, they're thankful, again, for the quality of service you're providing. I hear it time and again.
We don't like competing just on price. I mean, we like to compete on service too.
Well, one time I called about one of those dumpsters that you drop off and you're, I don't know who I was talking to, but man, he was right on it. He even called me back in a couple of minutes and said, we're out here, we're gonna take care of it. So it all took place in about 10 minutes. He was on it.
I'm gonna echo George. I think, you know, a few of us were a little apprehensive about the reserve dumpster program versus that citywide pickup. But I think at the end of the day, the reserve dumpster has been a more successful program. And the feedback I've been getting from it's been really good, so.
Might've been a little chaotic at first, but.
Anything that's good starts off a little chaotic, doesn't it?
That's right.
Now, just continue to do what you do and.
Yep, thanks.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time.
Tell your people thank you. I'm here for questions later.
All right, is there anybody else here wishing to address the council under public forum? Seeing no movement for the gallery, I'll go ahead and close the public forum and ask for any agenda changes.
Staff have no changes to present this evening.
Okay, council, how about an approval for the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, after having reviewed the consent agenda, I've submitted, I would make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, consent agenda passes. We'll move on to unfinished business, and the first item is the distressed property at 308 Chestnut. Do you want to pretense us on that? Ethan, I know we have representation in the, in the audience too.
Yeah, I think just you all hopefully received the email with the correspondence that was sent to City Attorney Jansen I on the property. Again, last, last time you guys discussed it, it was hopeful that the closing would happen by September 16th. It's my understanding that still has not taken place, but is slated for hopefully by October 1st or early October. I don't know if Brad has anything he wants to share, but obviously you can also hear from the, the property owner's representation as it's still owned by Mr. Reckus to the best of my knowledge.
Brad, do you have anything to add?
I don't at this time.
Jeremy, would you like to just address the council and let us know where we're really at on this?
Yeah, I can let you know where we're at. So repairs are undergone. I've started. I don't know if you've noticed, but the roof is off and there's new felt that is up and the hole in the roof has been repaired with new plywood. And we anticipate that those repairs will be done. I think the letter provided some type of timeline on that. And I think that's the best estimate that we have on that. When we were here last time, we were here with a letter of intent. You had questions about the specificity of it, the enforcement, and you asked that by the time we get to this next committee meeting, that we do something more than that, right? That we have a signed contract. We have a signed contract. We have a signed contract for the purchase of the land. There are still a few outstanding issues. One of them actually involves the city in that part of the land was donated to the city at some point as part of, I think, the firehouse expansion. And so we may need to get a survey to get the actual lots and stuff like that done. The parties are working with a title company to facilitate this. We have penciled in October 1st as the closing date. But we have the contracts, there's cash that I think has been placed in escrow to undergo both the funding of the repairs and everything else. So at the end of the day, I know this took a lot longer than you wanted to and probably everybody wanted to, but I think the city's getting ultimately what they want. Looks like you're going to have an apartment complex that is going to be safe and hopefully habitable soon. That you're gonna have tenants who will shop and spend their money here, maybe enroll their kids in school here. And you'll have one less property with Asie Reckus as the owner. So I think that's probably your biggest Christmas gift.
Well, I would, I would say that ultimately a productive use of that property, however it happens, is probably what the city's really looking for. So it sounds like we're on our way. Council, any of you have any questions, concerns, comments?
Why did we not meet the closed, scheduled closing day?
So the closing scheduled day, that was part of the letter 10. A lot of it had to do with, honestly, some of the legal work that had to happen in the background. The contracts, the agreements, mortgage notes, all that stuff was all drafted by my office. That's not what I do on a day-to-day basis, so I have to outsource that to other attorneys that it is what they do. And there's, just was a simple timeframe on that, so.
Well, I've certainly never known things to speed up when you get attorneys involved, so I can understand that.
So I have a sign above my office door that says delay and conquer, so.
Well, thank you for the explanation as to why. And my first thought when you said that we did meet the closing, I'm thinking, okay, what's he pulling now? That was the first thought that I had, honestly, and I very likely will always have those thoughts when something goes awry with this project. I'm gonna think, what's Ozzy doing now? And you guys are almost gonna always have to prove yourself to me. That's just how I feel.
Well, hopefully you'll be closed before the next meeting and.
That's certainly the hope. Like I said, we're working with the title company and there may have to do a survey. And so I don't know, you know, some of these things, when you're hiring other people, it suddenly becomes outside of your control. I don't anticipate this being the kind of thing where I'm back here next meeting telling you that we're not scheduled to close until December. But, and we've, you know, started the repairs to go along this simultaneously, right? So instead of waiting for this transaction process to complete, you know, we wanted to make sure we were doing this simultaneously. So that's why the repairs have started.
Ethan, did we ever get quotes for demo on that building?
Yes, and we are, unless you want them formally presented this evening, I would tell you, there's no price below 110,000.
I didn't think, I thought, okay, so I thought that's where we might be, but I just need, wanted to know that we had those.
So substantially more of a, of an impact to us.
Oh, sure.
If we went down that road than the Townsmen was.
Does this contract keep us from moving forward with our deadlines that we set forth? I mean, in regards to demolition of the property, does having a contract really change any of that? I mean, didn't we state, I mean, did we, I'm just asking for my own, like, person, I mean, did we state in our, whatever, that demolition of the property would take place, like, at a certain date, or did we not?
We asked for the property to be demolished by a certain date, or the city then reserve the right to do it at our expense and essentially.
And at our discretion at any time thereafter.
And that date was.
That date was.
Aim and went.
And if they don't do anything, we can still follow through.
That's what, yeah, they don't proceed, if they, if they're not making continual progress, we reserve the right to tear it down. They need to be moving forward every single day. And it'd be a shame to have them pay a lot of money into this thing and then have it tore down.
We set a date of August 26th for the property to either be down, or at that point, the city would have the right to take action, so.
I think everybody knows my feelings about the project itself, but the, and the process and Ozzy and all that stuff. But if we don't have to fork out 100,000 plus to tear the thing down and something gets fixed in a reasonable manner, can I understand legal things and, and surveys and all that stuff? I'm good with, and it go for a little while, but I'm with everybody else. If, if we're sitting here in November and we're looking at each other, I can tell you what the answer is gonna be, so I hope that's not the case.
Yep, I would say the best thing is to stay focused and keep it coming along.
Yeah, things are moving. I mean, we've done.
Just don't, don't, yeah, I don't want anybody to get, feel, start feeling easy that, oh, we're in. It's like, no, you guys gotta be making progress every single day.
And I.
Until bodies are in there, people are living in there.
And I will share with all of you, both the current property owner and the prospective property owner very much understand that while we did authorize the initial building permit for those baseline repairs, you know, get the roof hole fixed, get the, the second floor walkway structurally sound, there's still a whole separate occupancy certificate, et cetera, because this has been a vacant property for so long, and that's an entirely separate process. So when these, when this building permit, you know, this scope of work is done, that doesn't mean that suddenly people are free to move into that structure, so.
Do we still, do we still, like, have a bill out for monies that are owed to us by any of these people? I mean, can I ask that? I don't even know if I can ask that.
Well, we do on the Townsmen. We paid for that.
Well, I mean, because part of me is just like, I, if this is somebody who owes us money still on things that he said he was gonna do that never did, and now we're, we're meeting these people, like, halfway, and they owe us money, or we're gonna be out all the money from the other situation. I kind of feel like now we're handshaking gentleman's agreement, or whatever you wanna call it, with essentially the same.
The way I understand it, and Brad and Ethan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but each property has to be treated as its own separate entity.
Yes.
I mean.
I'll call it what you want, but you burned me once. I mean.
I, I get it.
Can we just forget that?
I understand that, but, you know, essentially, the city's faced with making a decision as to whether you're gonna spend 110,000 destroying something or let private money spend between 100 to 200,000, much of which is already now, you know, being funded and undergone to get that property building to where it's at. And if it, you know, the Bison Foundation, I'm not their attorney, but I don't enter into this agreement if I don't have some intent and plan to make it habitable, right? To get the apartments, because that doesn't make any sense from where they stand, right? That's a losing enterprise. So I, you know, I can only assume that the Bison Foundation is doing this, you know, to rent the apartments out and, you know, a way to, you know, make their costs, to make their rents, to provide them cash flow.
Well, I'll just, I mean, I'm.
At the end of the day, we will be dealing with.
You can all be happy about it, that's fine, but I'm just gonna let, I'm gonna record, like, I'm not gonna be, I'm not happy about it.
Well, I, I, I look at it from the point is, I'm hopeful that we will have a good neighbor with the future Bison Group. I'm, I'm hoping that they will be a good partner in this, in the community.
Well, at some point, we have to, you know, yes, we have a, a great community here, and I guess in my mind, I want it to continue to be that. And so I guess that's where I'm coming from.
Does Bill have anything to say?
Do I have anything to say now?
You have anything to add?
Would you like to speak on behalf of the Bison Foundation this evening?
I can. I'm glad to answer any questions. Yeah, this, like you said, it's gone slower than we would have liked. Unfortunately, that's just the reality of it.
But you can verify the contracts in place and there.
The contract's been signed, it's been delivered to the security company. We're just waiting on them to give us a date for closing. And, yeah, like you said, they gotta do title search, whatever they do on their end. But that has been done, and I've seen that contract and signatures and all that, so I can verify that, yes.
Let me, and this is probably more for Brad, is I know there's probably taxes that were done on that thing, and we've talked about this before. Does that have to be cleared up before that sale goes through?
Should if it goes through a formal closing process.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, some arrangement has to be made for those things to be satisfied. So it can also be a situation where they're assumed by a buyer. I mean, there's any number of ways that can be negotiated, so. Do they have to be completely absolved? No, not necessarily, but someone has to be committed to paying them. And generally, at every closing, we see that, you know, the buyers don't want to take those on, so that usually some arrangement is made for all, all payments to be current. So they get titled without a cloud.
That is in the contract, Jim.
Okay, yeah, I figured it would be, but I'm just making clear that, because that's an open thing out there.
Yeah, no, it is.
Well, anybody have anything else?
Thank you.
Well, Bill, Jeremy, please let Ethan know the minute that thing's closed.
Will do.
Will do.
Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Let Ozzy know we're watching.
I, I know he knows, so I'll make sure he knows.
Next item under unfinished business is a solid waste collection contract term, yeah?
I would suggest that you have a motion to have this back on the agenda on the, our next council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to continue the distressed property hearing at 308 Chestnut until our next scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to continue the distressed property hearing at 308 Chestnut until the next regular council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Thank you. Now, let's talk about the solid waste collection contract term. And Ethan's got something that he wants to talk about here.
Yeah, just as we're working up getting that final contract, before you all, we noticed, and apologies that we didn't catch this last meeting, we didn't ask for clarification of whether we wanted a five or 10-year term, so if you all can please indicate, there is a dollar difference, if you will, in the base price. If we choose five year over 10 year, obviously, the consideration is when you all might feel the city would like to go back out to bid. I mean, like any contract, we, we have the ability to terminate it in a term if we'd want to go to, go out to bid again sooner. But, you know, for all intents and purposes, we, we typically try not to do that unless there's a major issue.
Correct me if I'm wrong, when we were talking about this decision last meeting, I believe we were all discussing the 10-year option.
Yeah, we presented the 10.
Yeah, so I think that's general consensus, so.
Yeah.
If there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and make that motion. Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve a 10-year contract with Nysley Brothers based on the governing bodies, a decision from last meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to extend that contract term to 10 years to Nysley for the solid waste collection contract. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those say nay. All right, that carries. Now we can move on to new business. First item under new business is the Kansas Barn Sale. They have a special event application. I don't see any representation for them here, do I?
This is an event now they've had in Riverside Park since 2022. Like the location, their event this year is October 4th and 5th, so it's Friday, Saturday. They have provided proof of their special event policy with the city. They don't require a lot of logistical support in terms of road closures or anything. It's more just them having kind of the run of the park for those two days. We haven't had issues in the past, to my knowledge, in terms of, I mean, they, they're very good stewards of the park, clean up after themselves. So we would recommend approving that special event application.
Ethan, are we gonna ask Harvey County to, for those signs to get, put out on 89 like we did last time about?
Yes, we've asked them, for them both for that weekend and then the next weekend for the Arts and Crafts.
Very good, okay, good.
So we should have them.
Hey, Ethan, I talked to Brad today, and he said that we should really formally do it by resolution. So Brad and I drafted Resolution 2024-13, basically just formally closing the park for that event.
Since it's a public asset, it's best if we do that so that we've got some written record.
So we'll need a motion to adopt that resolution.
With that, if there's no more discussion, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion, a resolution providing for the temporary closure of public right-of-way thoroughfares or public access roadways on or and along Riverside Park in the city of Hallsted, Kansas, for the times the dates be specified. And this would be Resolution Number 2024-13.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution Number 2024-13. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And I'll just sign it real quick, so did my homework for Julie. Next item is the Brick Streets Arts and Crafts Fair. We got a special event and road closure application for them too. We do have representation from Brick Streets here. And ladies, find your way to the podium. Podium, let us know who you are, because some people may not know.
I'm Mary Wilson from Hallsted.
Amy Beck. We've just been, we turned in our packet with the signatures from all of the businesses that would be affected by closing the street. The ones that we were able to actually contact, and I believe we did have more than the 51% to close the same section of the street that we did last year, which is basically from Jump Start down to the 309 Building. And then Third Street just out right here too, about the alley. Yeah, we just asked for the usual items that you have, that you guys have given to us before, porta pots, hand washing stations, trash cans, picnic tables.
Street closure signs.
Barricades. The, the big difference this year is Grace Hill Winery is coming with their wines and craft beers. And so we know that we have to have additional signage around the outside of the event saying no alcohol beyond this point, so we're prepared to do that. Yeah, I don't know what else. That's pretty much it. We start 5:30 in the morning? Yeah. If we can have the road.
How many vendors you up to?
As far as officially locked in, I believe we're right around 30. I'm receiving messages daily, you know, I'm sending in my app, I'm sending in my app. A lot of them wait until that last 10-day forecast is out before they fully commit. You know, if we could get that indoor venue built, we could have a lot more. But we're looking at hopefully having about the same size as last year. We do have some live entertainment booked. The wine and beer tasting, so hopefully it'll be a success.
Awesome.
Good. Well, we've got three separate motions here. First one is to approve, motion to approve provision for trash carts. I guess I'm making this in a form of motion. Motion to approve provision of trash carts, portable toilets, and street closures as requested.
Second. Have a motion in a second to provide the provisions as outlined for the Brick Streets Arts and Crafts Fair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the Mayor's Choice Award for the festival in the amount of $500.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the Mayor's Choice Award in the amount of $500. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. That carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-12 and authorization for an alcohol consumption area.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution Number 2024-12. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. All right, looks like you ladies are set.
Good to go.
Is there anything else? At least not tonight.
We'll talk to you later.
Yeah. You're on my list.
Thank you both so much for all your work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I'll just let you know, I've gotta head to Lawrence that evening for a wedding, so it might be a flyby that I do early that morning for the Mayor's Choice. But I'll try to make sure I get down there and get that done. And if I can't decide right away, I'll, I'll pass it off to George to go figure it out.
Well, the, the vendors are supposed to be set up and ready to roll at 9 o'clock.
Okay.
So let me know.
All right. Well, thank you. We'll see you guys later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item under new business is public works equipment purchase. We're gonna make Pat come to the podium and the mic tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, council. We are looking for to replace our current backhoe, I should say. We did go out and set up a set of specs, which I think were in the packet. And then we sent it out to eight vendors, and we only got one response, so. Yeah. I knew kind of partially because of the specs that we'd probably have a limited number, but I was expecting more than just the one, so. But the machine we're looking for is basically, and this is something that kind of came up after this May 19 storm. We kind of stretched ourselves with the capabilities of the loader. We needed it working out at the burn site, and then we, it had a problem, so then we had to send the backhoe out there, and it just doesn't really handle that well, well. So we spec'd a machine that could actually help with that duty a little more. It still gives us the backhoe that we really need most of the time, but it does allow us to do more loader duties with it if we need it. We did ask for a quick connect front end like we do have on the loader, so we could switch buckets to a more of a grapple for going after trees and stuff. So we could use it in town on those type of events. It also would come in handy during our leaf and limb pickup every year. I mean, it's just, just a machine that will do what we're needing it to do right now, so.
And I know the current backhoe was slated last year for replacement. How many years have we gotten out of that for?
Well, it's just under 16 years, so basically, I think it was probably earlier this year's the 15-year mark, if I remember right. So it's, was headed towards 16. We have had, over the last, you know, five years, I think, or four years, we've spent a fair bit on repairs. It still could use some more. I'm just afraid it's gonna be a money pit going forward, so I really kind of want to stop spending on it.
Are we getting some trade-in value out of it on this deal?
Uh, we'll, we'll do what we normally do, is put it in Purple Wave, and I figure we'll get probably 15,000 out of it. Maybe a little more, maybe a little less. It's, it's, I went and looked at some history and that, that age of machine was hitting anywhere from 10,000 to 30,000, so.
And we'll probably get more for it there than we will by trading it in, I'm sure.
Yeah, probably get about 5,000, 6,000 on a trade-in.
Is it typical to get a new machine like this, or to get a machine, is it not possible to get a machine that's like a few years old, or? I don't know anything about machines, is why I'm asking.
We have purchased used equipment in the past. The problem is you don't know what you're buying. It's, if you can find a good used machine, you're gonna pay almost what new price is. And that's before, because what we have found is, because we get a government, pretty good deep, deep government discount. Because I think the list price on this machine was 212 or something like that, and they discounted it down, you know, 50, 60,000 for the government. So you would buy a used machine probably in the same price that we are looking at a new machine. So we kind of just backed off of trying to find, for some equipment still, used is fine. This one, because we want to keep it 15, 16, 18 years, you know, we, what, would prefer to go on a new. And then finding used equipment is hard, unless you go to Purple Wave, and then you're, I say again, not sure what you're buying.
Somebody else's problem.
Yeah, you're buying somebody else's problems that they're trying to get rid of.
You gotta warranty with this one too.
Uh, yeah, I believe it was two years.
Yeah, that's pretty standard on those, yeah.
I think you can buy a longer warranty if you want, but yeah, it's not sure it's really worth it.
No.
And you want to talk about funding, any? Anybody want to talk about funding for the citizens' sake?
It comes from the equipment fund and those funds that are specific to public works equipment purchases. This is a major piece of equipment for them, but I mean, they could, you know, buy this piece of equipment twice with the money they have saved up for purchases, so. Yeah, and it would be a cash purchase, not a lease purchase or anything like that.
That's what I want the citizens to know. We've been saving and working towards making a cash purchase for this type of equipment, so.
And this is basically, basically a scheduled replacement.
Yes.
Yeah.
A 16-year schedule. Well, we gotta stretch our schedule a little bit.
That's right, man, wow.
Yeah, it was a little higher than I was anticipating, but not by that much. I mean, I did, did look at this early on, right after the storm, and had the vendor, you know, give me a quote on, so I at least knew roughly where it's gonna fall. And it really wasn't that much different than a standard backhoe either, so that's what surprised me, so. what surprised me, so. I was like, if it was going to be a huge difference, then I probably would have stayed with a standard backhoe, but since they were so close, I was like, why not?
Is it still a JBG or JCB?
JCB, yes.
Can you use any of the attachments you have now?
No.
But, okay, so will it, will it come with all the attachments?
Right, that's, that's one reason, there was a, about a $7,000 grapple bucket that we ordered with it. We always, on the loader equipment, I always buy what they call this, this six-in-one, that's basically the clamshell bucket. We did have them price a grapple bucket that's got more capabilities to get around bigger stuff. That was like, say, about 7,000. And then it, we did get a, for the backhoe side of it, the 24-inch standard digging bucket. I'm hoping that we can maybe modify existing buckets on the backhoe. We do have a few others. But talking to the vendor, there is not a adapter to make them work on this, so we're either going to have to buy a couple other buckets to go with it, and those were, I think, about 2,000 or 3,000 apiece. But we'll figure out exactly what we really need back there. Again, I'm hoping that maybe we can take it to a weld shop and actually have them weld on the brackets that'll work on the back of this backhoe.
Do you still use it out at the cemetery?
Yeah.
I didn't know if you, with the small tractor loader, whether you still use it or not, so.
Um, it's, it's going to depend on the grave. We've been using the mini out there a lot more.
They're easier to do.
Yeah, so there's going to be an occasion where the bigger backhoe will be needed out there, but the mini's been handling that. And that's, I'm hoping, does help, because we just got that mini a few years ago. It'll take some of the load off the backhoe, so we won't have to work it quite as hard, but we still got to have that backhoe capabilities, so, or, I can't just do without it for some of the, some of the projects we can get into.
Sure.
We just can't get deep enough with the mini, so.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve the purposes of a JCB 4CX14 backhoe loader with a Qfit six-in-one multipurpose bucket and a Qfit multi-shovel with a grapple for the loader side and hydraulic thumb, and a quick hitch 24-inch bucket with a backhoe for the amount not to exceed $173,723.29 from can equipped, and authorization for staff signatures or any necessary documents related to that purchase.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve this new backhoe. I'm going to shorten it up a little bit, Charlie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, let us know when that comes in, Pat.
Shall do, thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda is the disposition of the city-owned lots on Main and Stutzman Streets. I guess you guys all remember, as part of that purchase to extend Main Street, the city's got four buildable lots down there, five if you count Lot 5, but because of the Ozzy Lehman Park, Ethan and I think we should leave Lot 5 off the table at this time. And Ethan, you might bring the council up to par with what we're intending on doing here.
Yeah, basically, I just, it was kind of brought up at our last work session, you know, if the city is going to, we've, we've had offers on the lots, and those have always kind of been not, not really prompted by the city. They've, they've been overtures from, from private individuals having interest in developing those. It was the indication of the governing body when we, we purchased the Powers property that hopefully any usable land eventually would be sold to help offset that original investment to acquire the property. Now that the roads are in, you know, utilities, they are shovel-ready lots, there, there's not a lot of reason for us as a city any longer. You guys have seen the, the concept for Lehman Park. It looks like we can definitely do what was intended with that park without needing any of those, you know, far north lots to be part of the parkland, unless you all would want them to become part of it. But just basically looking for direction from you all of, if you want us to formally, I guess, prepare like an RFP, RFQ that will formally advertise. I mean, we will obviously still give you all the right to, to entertain or to throw out any bids that might come in. But I guess we're going to do it, rather than allowing on, on any interested buyers to come to us, we advertise and, and let everyone have a shot.
The only question I have is, the developer that's developing the rest of the ground south of those lots paid to have all the electrical utilities run in there. There's a portion of those lots that were covered, too. Have we paid the developer for that work?
We have not, but we're working on that.
Okay, that's my biggest concern, Council.
I think if we can develop them, we should. That's my opinion.
You don't mean we as a city, as we?
If we can sell them and have them developed, then it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, I believe the reason we held off selling them earlier is to make sure the boundaries of Lehman Park were established, and we knew what we was going to need for that, that park. And now that we know, we can move forward with this portion of it.
Well, and my holdup back then was I wanted Main Street to be extended, so if we ran into anything during that construction, we could address it. And so once Main Street was extended, they've been properly platted, to me, they're, they're ready to market, so I'm fine with setting up an RFP or whatever we need to do to put those out and make them available. And here's the other thing, do we sell them all four together? And if somebody buys them all four together, do we have a developer's agreement from that purchaser?
Yeah, we definitely need the.
Best practice.
Yeah, I, I think we want to be very clear that whoever's bidding on those lots, everybody needs to be on the same playing field. So whatever we have to do to make that happen, I think is what we need to do.
You're saying like, you want, we want these to be like residential?
Yeah, they're zone residential, but since there's a group of four lots, instead of trying to sell to an individual, obviously, we're going to sell to somebody that has the intention to develop those lots. So, and there's a developer there that's already interested in those lots, and I think, so whoever buys those four lots should basically be treated as a developer and have the same developers' agreement with the city that the other developer does. I think that's the only way we can make it fair.
I think the plan should be part of the RFP.
Yes. And, and I guess, don't need a formal motion. If the consensus is to prepare an RFP, we'll bring the RFP back for you guys, so you would know the, the timeline, the parameters, if you want something changed like that, you know, we want to know. I mean, one of my things would be wanting to make sure that they have someone or, or that they're, have history of like working on a floodplain, because we know that one. One lot on Stutzman does have floodplain issues. It's not an unbuildable lot, but it's going to need some dirt work.
Uh, this might be a little bit early, but I'll, of course, we'll have a clawback clause in this contract if.
I'll have to work with Brad on, you know, it gets, it gets tricky with the way development works, if you sell to a developer, but if they sell to a, you know, how you keep clawback when you're two people removed from the original purchaser gets, that's, we'll, we'll engage Brad's legal expertise to see if he can find a way to thread that needle.
So no motion, just consensus? Thumbs up?
So we're going to rely on you and not Google for that one, Brad?
I rely on Google, so it shouldn't be a problem.
You should be consistent.
Council, any other questions regarding that particular issue? Let's move on our agenda, and the next item is best site visit. This is battery energy storage system. I asked Ethan to put this on the agenda, and I suppose I can go ahead and let him know, Ethan, that we, you've been in contact with the city of Minneapolis, Kansas. They have a best site. Their site looks a little different than what we're potentially looking at here in town, because all their buses are stacked next to each other. I'd like to go visit the site and open it up for anybody on the council or the planning and zoning to potentially join for that visit. We wanted to get an idea who would be interested. Obviously, if we have more than two council members there, we got to be wary of coma requirements and maybe haul the newspaper with us, too, I don't know. But I've got room for myself plus three others in a vehicle, and we could take multiple vehicles, so we wanted to put it out to see who would be interested in going.
I'd be interested in going.
I'd be interested.
I would if one of the others can't do it.
What are you thinking about going?
Well, and that's the problem, it'll probably be during the day. I don't know that, because, you know, they're, the city of Minneapolis would be hosting us and asking them to come in on a Saturday outside of their normal work hours, probably wouldn't be fair for us since they're offering.
And I guess, one of the requests, as far as the one planning commission member that's reached out thus far, when we appraised them of the opportunity, just requested that it be on a Friday if at all possible, because that worked best for their, their schedule. Minneapolis's site was a joint development between the city of Minneapolis and KPP, so a little different, because Minneapolis actually owns their electric utility. So they're the electrical, you know, contractor. But their site's about a 1 megawatt, where Concurrent's proposed project, you know, is, is 100-plus megawatts, so, I mean, full. Just to let you all know, I guess of that, it, it's not, still not necessarily apples to apples, but it at least would let you get a good look. Theirs is located in their industrial area, which is similar to, you know, ours is being asked to be an industrial area. They've, you know, indicated they'd be willing, obviously, to answer what, what questions you all might have in terms of noise, the safety measures they've taken, you know, whatever that might be. So just a good opportunity, again, finding one that's as large scale as us is still, still proven a little tricky. These are not things that typically they want to open up to just anyone and everyone walking through, but we're still looking for a larger one, and NEDC has indicated that they'd still help, so. This was just close and a little bit bigger of an operation than what's in Cedric County.
So, yeah, I'd be interested in going.
Okay, so we'll try to get a date together, and when we get the date, Ethan will put it out, and we'll figure out the dynamics of how to make it work after that. All right, next item under new business is a potential reschedule of the October 4 City Council meeting. Why we got to reschedule the meeting October 14?
Columbus Day, so technically the offices are closed. I can tell you as far as Julie and I, and, and we can figure out the cameras that Pat didn't want, it's not a big deal for us to come in that Monday evening, if you guys want to keep it on Monday. When we do move it, we typically move it to the next Tuesday. As we've scheduled some things, I know that presents a conflict for Brad, because his Tuesday meetings don't, don't choose just because the Monday meetings move. So if we want Brad there, I would say, you know, as far as the two staff members that for sure have to be here, both Julie and I are okay of keeping it the night of October 14th, if that's still what works for all of you.
Personally, I think the Vikings discovered America, so I don't celebrate Columbus Day. It's up to the rest of you.
If they're good with them.
If they're good with it, and I, I've got to teach that at night in Malveen, so I won't, on the 15th, so I couldn't be here, so.
So is it going to terribly hurt your guys' feelings if we leave it on the 14th?
He's putting words in my mouth, I never said this. It's fine.
Okay, keep it on Monday?
Okay.
I'm, I'm good with whatever, but yeah, if you guys want.
Well, thank you guys for doing that for us.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, that does finish our new business section of the agenda. We do have a couple of executive sessions on the agenda this evening, and I would entertain Jim's motion for that first one here shortly. Soon as they tell me what I'm saying.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council recessed to an executive session, proprietary financial information of a corporation, confidential data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets, corporations, partnerships, and individual prioritarieship, exemption, KSA 75-4319B4, to include the city manager, the city attorney, and to readjourn at 8 o'clock.
We have a motion in a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say heck no. All right, we'll move it to the back council room.
We are, we are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Not hearing from the council, I would entertain the motion for our second executive session at this time.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that the Halsted City Council recess into an executive session to discuss performance of a city employee and maintain of privacy rights. Personnel matters of non-elected personnel exemption K S A seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one to include the city manager, the city attorney, and re adjourn at eight twenty.
Have a motion in a second to enter into executive session until eight twenty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign, we'll move back to the room again, council. We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Hearing nothing out of the council, we'll continue to move on our agenda. The next section is the report section, and Julie's gone out of her way to find me up a couple proclamations this evening. These are two proclamations we do every year. Uh, the first one is Public Natural Gas Week proclamation. As you're all aware of, the city does own the natural gas system here in town, so we always pay homage by doing this one. Whereas we, the citizens of Halsted, Kansas, place high value on local control over community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, locally-controlled, not-for-profit natural gas utility, and as consumers and owners of our natural gas utility, have a direct say in utility operations and policies. And whereas the city of Halsted provides our homes, businesses, farms, social service, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and cost-effective natural gas, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at a not-for-profit rate. And whereas the city of Halsted is a valuable community asset that contributes substantially to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas the natural gas utility industry is changing and will continue to change over the next few years with the goal of allowing individual consumers to choose their power supplier while continuing service from their current natural gas distributor. And whereas this concept of customer choice in generation is a new one that will have a broad impact on and affect all parts of the natural gas utility industry, including the consumer-utility relationship. And whereas this community's natural gas system, city of Halsted's first and only purpose is to work in partnership with its customer owners to furnish an essential public service and the best customer service to community citizens at lower cost rates. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Halsted will continue to work to ensure that consumers benefit from any changes in the natural gas industry utility just as it has since the utility was created to serve all the citizens of Halsted. And be it further resolved that the week of October sixth through the twelfth be designated Public Natural Gas Week in order to honor the city of Halsted for its contributions to the community and to make its consumer owners, policymakers, and employees more aware of the city of Halsted's overall contributions to their well-being. And be it further resolved that our community joins hands with other public natural gas systems in the United States that ensure cost-cutting competition for natural gas customers through local and community ownership. Signed by me. The next proclamation is Fire Prevention Week. You should remember Jim coming in for this one.
We remember that.
Now we just keep him here all the time. So, the Fire Prevention Week twenty-twenty-four proclamation. Whereas the city of Halsted, Kansas, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Halsted. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires caused thirty-eight-hundred civilian deaths in the United States in twenty-twenty, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to fires every twenty-three seconds. Think about that. That, that's a lot of fires. Every twenty-three seconds, there's a department responding to one. Whereas smoke alarms send smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Halsted residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas Halsted residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Halsted residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas Halsted first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Halsted residents responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the twenty-twenty-four Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms, Make Them Work For You, effectively serves to remind Halsted it is important to reduce the risk of fire when cooking at home. Therefore, I, Dennis Travis, Mayor of Halsted, do hereby proclaim October sixth through the twelfth, twenty-twenty-four as Fire Prevention Week throughout this community, and I urge all the people of Halsted to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Halsted's Fire and Emergency Services. Signed by me. That ends my proclamations for this evening, and we'll move on to the rest of the governing body for comments, and tonight I'll start with you, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add on, being an old fire guy myself. I always, uh, I encourage, in the schools, they always have fire alarms, and they, and they do drills, and I always, when I used to talk to the kids and I talked to the teachers, uh, whether it be the, the Mennonite schools or the public schools, I always ask them, do you do that same drill at home? Do you practice as a family to do that? And since it's, it's Fire Prevention Week coming up in a few weeks, I encourage everyone that's listening tonight, if you have a family, if it's just you and, and your significant other, um, that you practice that yourself, not only at school, but do they know where to go? Do they know where to meet? You know, if there's a firearm, because the first thing we're gonna ask as a fire officer when we pull up is everybody out. And the best way to know that is to have a spot. So, that's it.
Thanks for that, Jim. Charlie?
I would echo that, being in the school system for a long time. And when my kids were young, we did. Living out in the country was a challenge, getting out of top-story windows and down, but we had fire ladders. And we'd open the windows and throw those rascals out, and go girls, and they did. It's like, yeah, that, that's a good plan. Something I would, I would just bring up, but somebody asked me about this, and I think probably during a, a work session. It has to do with, uh, worksite utility vehicles, of which we have a lot of worksites, people and contractors doing things right now, but also farm utility vehicles. And, uh, make it accessible for those people to use those vehicles to come to town. Go to the co-op. You know, they can literally, they can legally drive them in the country and even on a state highway, but they can't come into town and cross the bridges into the city limits. So I think we need to revisit that.
You writing that down for a work session? I didn't mean.
Yeah, he knew about it already.
I do have something, and Jim reminds me of this. My home is woefully underprepared with as far as fire extinguishers and such. So my question to you, Jim, is there a company out there that will come to private homes and work with us as far as best places for fire extinguishers, kitchens, garages, things of that nature? And can we have, is there a service that will inspect them annually or every two years? I'd like to get more, maybe we just touch on this at a work session also and put this out to the citizens.
Yeah.
I think it'd be really good, because like I said, I am woefully unprepared.
I know when I built my new home, obviously I put smoke detectors in, and I did put a fire extinguisher in my pantry by my kitchen, and then there's another one downstairs in my mechanical room. So I do have at least two in the house.
Do you know how to use it?
Yeah, I've used them before.
That's the other problem. Sometimes there's rules, like you gotta pull the pin out, you gotta shake it.
They don't last long.
Pull the pin and let it rip, potato chip.
So anyways, I would like to maybe address this at some point, maybe put it out as a public service, maybe just information out there, let them chase it themselves, because I will. If we can put that together for our citizens, that'd be great.
I think it's a good idea. Obviously, we'd have to get with Andy and Doug and talk to them about it. But there are companies also that, and services that come to homes and that are in the area. And the best way to find them is to visit with the school, you know, who do they use? Or we have a company here at the city that recharges stuff and does some fire protection stuff, and they're their best resource to talk to.
And then put it on the web.
Yeah.
Put it on the TV.
On our app. Put it on our new app.
Yeah, there you go.
That's cool. How about you, Josh?
No, I'm good.
Shawna?
I just wanted to thank the maintenance staff and the city that puts the flags up down Main Street. I think that's a really great thing when you come into town on game days and to celebrate the community and just have some pride in the community in that way. And then also the four H'ers out there that have been taking care of all of the planners throughout the summer and spring. That just beautifies our Main Street, and I just, it's a pleasant place to be any time of the day. So thanks to all the people that make that happen.
I agree. Well, we're back to you, Ethan, for your manager's report.
All right, just a couple of things. Just a reminder for all of you and the public that the wastewater treatment plant seeking that state revolving funding, that public meeting is going to be on Monday, October 7th. So please, everyone get that on your calendar. A great opportunity for the public to come, learn a little bit about the project, everything there, also a requirement of even applying for the funding. The next work session for the planning commission for the battery energy storage regulations will be on September 30th. It is a work session, public can attend, it just won't be a public hearing where they're actually taking public comment, it's more for them to receive information from who they've asked to be present. We continue the ongoing work on Ninth Street between Chestnut and Spruce. We did have our first change order submitted for around 16,000. We're working with the engineer on why that's being requested and some of the particular. So just be aware, we did hit, snagged some of it involved. We had some sewer main that was encased in concrete, which no one expected, so they had to break out. A lot more concrete than they were anticipating. You can get with Pat, and he can explain the fine details of that if you're curious.
I heard about that.
Plumbing surveys, they were still asking that residents, if you haven't responded, they're available on the website, we'll mail you another copy. We're doing everything we can. We really don't want to have to chase everyone down by phone or knock on doors to get those response. Again, it's a KDHE EPA mandate, so we don't have a lot of wiggle room to not turn those in. We have to have those in in October, so please, 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 if you haven't responded, respond. Just even giving us the information as well as you might know it for your property is important. Easements requests being mailed out for the Safe Routes to Schools project for those properties that might be affected by construction. Please, if you get one of those in the mail, please read it carefully. We hope you'll sign it so we can continue that project. You know, if you have any questions, contact City Hall, we'd be glad to discuss, but that is, you know, something we need to get done and have those easements put in place before we can continue to construction on that. We also have met on the preliminary plans. We're about 30% plan set done for North Street. So Pat and I kind of walked the engineer through some questions they had regarding drainage things, so that is moving along nicely. And then to let you all know, I will be out of the office this Thursday and Friday. I will be in Kansas City for the KMGIA and KMEA Joint Board of Administration meetings as I serve as Vice President for KMGIA. So if you're looking to get ahold of me, cell phone will be best. And that is all I have this evening, unless there's any other questions.
Ethan, regarding the survey on the water supply lines to the homes, would it be helpful to put like an insert in the billing, in the utility billing?
Have you done that?
Maybe just one complete page. Help us.
It's actually going out in the newsletter, too. I don't know that we'll be able to send it out as a separate insert because of other
I see.
That are already being asked to put in.
What's your percentage of response looking like on that, Julie?
Five, that's, uh-uh. He has them all.
Say.
Yeah, not great. We're probably around 150.
You turned yours in?
Can you put like?
Yeah.
Okay. I know you got that.
Please, please.
Was there a separate one for wastewater or is this?
No, it's just water.
So the one I filled out for it.
I mean, it was a whole form that we sent out explaining everything.
Yeah, we filled it out.
Well, citizens, if you're still watching, please get that done for us. We really need your help on this. And if you're watching, tell your friends to get that filled out and get it to us, please.
Fill it out for your friend.
Make it up.
If you know their information.
Help your friends fill it out.
Yes.
Yeah. But yeah, I mean, we have over 900 water-served customers that we have to have an answer for every single property that has a public water connection.
Well, please help us.
So it will be saving us a lot of staff time and a lot of probably voicemails. So.
Sounds good. Well, council, anybody else have anything they'd like to add?
The signs, is that anything new on that? I walk by the stakes every time I go walking.
Hopefully, if weather cooperates, I believe Pat and his guys will hopefully get the footings finalized or started and.
What should happen in this, if we don't have it poured this week, it'll be poured the next week.
You're talking about the wayfinding side?
Yeah, they're pretty much, once the footings go in, I think Miracle Sign's kind of done with their side of things, so we are doing ours, which again, thanks to Pat and his guys, I know they're busy with some other projects, but that is saving us about $8,000 with them doing those footings, so.
Very good, very good.
Sounds good. Anything else, council? If not, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, council.